All right, sorry for the folks, sorry for the delay, folks, and welcome to our meeting tonight. March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the regular board meeting of Hoopa Unified School District Board of Education. I have a roll call, please.
President of the Board, Robert Garcia.
Present.
Clerk of the Board, Joseph Navarro.
Present.
Trustee Karen Bradford.
Present.
Trustee Eric Ditweiler.
Present.
Trustee Melissa Regal.
Present.
Secretary of the Board, Triton Hanson.
Present.
Staff Advisors, Paula Ford.
Present.
Dave Dubrowski.
Present.
Rosa Santos Lee.
Present.
Daniel Brooks.
Present.
Student Board Members, Priscilla Perez.
Present.
Allison McCartney.
Present.
Haley Bisbee.
Present.
Kayla Hurst.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Worley. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Jeff Lewis to lead us in the plaque salute, and before we sit down at the conclusion, please remain standing. I have moments of silence. This time, I would like to hold a moment of silence for Mr. Melvin Arredondo, retired district employee. Mr. Arredondo was employed as a grounds equipment operator with JUSD from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and twenty-two. The Board would like to express its condolences to the Arredondo family. Would also like to include and hold a moment of silence for Ms. Judy Lynch, retired district employee. Ms. Lynch was employed as an elementary school teacher from with JUSD from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and eighteen. The Board would like to express its condolences to the Lynch family. And finally, I would like to hold a moment of silence for Mr. Dennis Payne, retired district employee. Mr. Payne was employed as a secondary teacher, coach with JUSD from nineteen sixty-four to two thousand. The Board would also like to express its condolences to the Payne family. Thank you. Please be seated. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Rosa Santos Lee to deliver our inspirational comment.
Thank you, President Garcia. Last Wednesday was International Women's Day, which coincides with March being Women's History Month. This month, we recognize the significant contributions of women in all fields and their valuable role in society. We honor the women who have fought for equality and made a difference in the world. I'd also like to honor the women of JUSD, who in their roles from trustees, student board members, bus drivers, food service workers, crossing guards, activity and campus supervisors, custodians, secretaries, technicians, clerks, media clerks, teachers, both general and special ed, aides, counselors, nurses, social workers, site and district administrators, and all of the other many positions that women hold that support student success. Our JUSD women inspire young women and girls in our schools to become the next generation of leaders, innovators, and change makers. They have a profound impact on our schools and our community, and we are grateful for all that they do. Let us continue to support and uplift the women in our district and work towards a more equitable and inclusive future for all. Here's to strong women. May we know them, may we be them, maybe may we raise them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Santos Lee. Okay, we'll move on to reports from closed session. First, we'll start with you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, President Garcia. In closed session, by a unanimous vote of five to zero, with all trustees voting in favor and none opposed, the Board voted to appoint Ms. Kelly Ramirez as the Assistant Principal of Stone Avenue Elementary, and Ms. Ramirez is here. Would you please stand so we can acknowledge you?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Mrs. Santos Lee.
Thank you, President Garcia. In closed session this evening, the Board in a five-to-zero vote agreed to settlement agreement for Office of the Administrative Hearing Case Number two zero two-two eleven zero five zero three, resolving all issues.
Thank you, Mrs. Santos Lee. Mrs. Ford.
Thank you. Again, in closed session with a five-oh vote, the Board approves settlement of Claim Number six zero eight eight six zero.
Thank you, Mrs. Ford. Onto item number seven, School Board Member, Student Board Member Reports. Dr. Hanson.
Thank you, President Garcia, and speaking of women leaders, we're super excited to have our student board members here with us tonight, and we're, we'd want to extend a really warm welcome to our new student board member from Nuevo Vista High School, Allison McCartney. So happy to have you. So we will have the other three go first tonight, and you're welcome, and then we'll finish off with Nuevo Vista. So let's start at the front. Kayla, would you like to go ahead with Rubito High School, please?
Okay, I do want to start off saying my condolences to Judy Lynch, because she was one of my elementary school teachers, and that's really shocking to find people that I knew almost personally. As I'm getting older, people like other people get older, so just wanted to make condolences to them. So now my board report. Good evening, Dr. Hanson, Board Members, Cabinet and Trustees. As I was not able to update you on all the wonderful things we're doing at Rubito last month, I have a lot to cover this evening. Starting strong, our spring sports have all have all been beginning their league games, meets and matches within the past few weeks. Boys volleyball, track and field, and softball all have wins in league. Our very own Rubito Cheer won the title of California State Champions. On Wednesday, March eighth, we welcomed our future Falcons on Falcon Pride Day. Mission Middle School students gathered in the gym after being provided lunch by our amazing cafeteria staff to meet our administrators, ASB president, band, and choir. Students broke off into groups and were given a tour of the campus and were giving and were given presentations from ten different career technical education classes we offer at Rubito. We also sent representatives from sports clubs and other extracurriculars to Mission Middle School today to highlight each organization. Tomorrow, March fourteenth, we will be hosting Best of Rubito, where we welcome incoming freshmen and their families to come see the best of the best that Rubito has to offer. There will be performances from band, choir, and ballet folklorico. There will also be plenty of opportunities for students to sign up for clubs and sports. Last Friday, Rubito was very excited to host the grand opening of the Elliott Duchan Concert Hall. In fact, I saw most of you there. We hope you enjoyed it. After the ribbon cutting by band and choir representatives, as well as Superintendent Emeritus Elliott Duchan, we had speeches from various members of the district and community, followed by amazing performances from band and choir, concluding with our school's alma mater performed by both groups together. Rubito Grub Club provided appetizers before and after the ceremony. Choir has their first official concert this Wednesday and in their brand-new concert hall. This year, RHS introduced our Wellness Center, where students are provided with mental health resources and people who are willing to listen. Every Wednesday during lunch, students can attend the Wellness, the Wellness Center for Wellness Wednesday, and which is in the Wellness Den to decompress and build community with fellow Falcons. On Wellness Wednesdays, our Wellness Center staff will host or put out games for students to play, such as Lotaria, a Lego building contest, or board games. Another amazing thing our Wellness Center staff puts on once a month is Thrifting Thursday during lunch. They put out the donations they receive for students to look through and take whatever they need for free. I personally have gone to both of the ones they've hosted so far, and they always have good, such a good turnout. There's always something for everyone. We are excited to see how this continues to grow a positive campus culture and community. One thing about Rubito is that we love to be connected with our future Falcons. Every Monday and Wednesday, we open up our track for the one hundred mile club so that elementary school students can come and run on our track, promoting healthy living and fitness for our younger generations. Recently, we started our Book Buddies program to connect with our Falcons, to connect our Falcons with elementary school students. Spring break is coming up, and we'll have a chance to recharge after this busy month. Rubito continues to win every day and soar with pride through the last couple of months of the school year. This concludes my board report for the month of March. For the month of March, thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. Haley, Patriot High School?
Good evening, Superintendent Hanson, Cabinet, Board Members, and Trustees. Since our last meeting in January, Patriot has been busy celebrating, advocating, and preparing as the semester comes to a close. On February twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, the House of Representatives met for the first time this semester to discuss school spirit, transportation, nutritional regulations, and senior activities. On March third, Patriot's student representatives met with Superintendent Hanson alongside Nuevo Vista, Hoopa Valley, and Rubito to discuss the reshaping of our campuses, particularly in terms of social interaction and school climate and senior graduation. In celebration of Women's History Month, Feminism Club hosted a Spirit Week last week, appreciating inspirational women in our students' lives. On March ninth, Patriot hosted Future Warrior Night for the incoming class of two thousand and twenty-seven, with appearances from our theater program, CTE Pathways, Avid, Link Crew, and ASB. On March sixteenth, Senior Class Council will be hosting Future Manifestation Day in the quad during lunch, encouraging PHS seniors to turn their dreams into their realities. This Friday, March seventeenth, ASB will host the Spring Rally, the final assembly of the school year, in honor of our senior students as they prepare for a new chapter of their lives. As for athletics, the spring season began earlier this month with victories by boys tennis over JW North and track and field against La Sierra. Congratulations to our warriors. That concludes my report for the month of March. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley. Priscilla in Hoopa Valley High School.
Good evening, President Garcia, Trustees, Dr. Hanson, and Cabinet. My name is Priscilla Perez, and I will be representing Hoopa Valley High School. Our spring sports are in full effect now, and here are some winning highlights so far. For boys tennis, we have wins for Hillcrest, Citrus Valley, Moreno Valley, Patriot Vista Del Lago, and Hoopa Hills. JVHS held a rally this past Friday, March tenth, with the theme of Cowboys versus Aliens. The underclassmen were the aliens and the upperclassmen were cowboys. We had several guest performances from guitar, theater, and one of our ASB students' family member, Adrian Covarluvas, who performed his amazing roping skills. ASB is also preparing for an upcoming AP Exam Spirit Week and Blood Drive in April. Theater is getting ready to perform their spring musical of The Little Mermaid Junior, a collaborative musical with Patriot High School. Next month, shows will be on April fifth, sixth, and seventh at JVHS, and then touring musicals will move to Patriot High School for the remaining shows on April twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth. Choir has a concert this Thursday in the theater at six P M., and band is preparing for their concert at the end of April. JVHS Avid recently had their annual junior trip, which is where they take a group of juniors out of town to visit colleges around the area for three days, and this year they went to San Diego. Junior Class Council has now announced the prom theme, which is a tale as old as time, a beauty and the beast theme. FFA had taken their livestock projects to India Fair, where the students auctioned off and showed off their animals. We showed lambs, goats, and pigs. JVHS FFA placed first in lamb pen of, pen of three, which is where the judges judge our top three lambs. We received a banner for being champions out of all the schools in attendance. Our very own Brianna Soto made it to Masters, which is a big deal for Masters showmanship, is showing each animal shown at the fair, including a steer, lamb, pig, goat, and dairy goat. I was very lucky and grateful for attending and being part of this amazing experience as we saw monster truck shows and went backstage to meet the drivers, saw a Flo Rida concert, and went to the fair together, as well as representing our school. And the best part was teaching the youth about our program and educating them on our work and the animals, and this concludes my report.
Wow, thank you, Priscilla. I appreciate that. Okay, Ally, we're happy to hear from Nuevo Vista, and don't worry too much. We're all behind you.
Good evening, Board Members, Cabinet, and Community Members. My name is Ally, and I'm grateful to represent Nuevo Vista at the board meeting. I am a junior in our ASB class, and we're excited to have many students graduate this Friday after spring break, and we will be welcoming students for the fourth quarter. At the end of February, we held our Monthly Fun Friday themed twindray. Nutrition services served us pizza, and what's pizza without chicken wings? It was a nice treat from our normal menu, and of course, there were games and prizes for us to enjoy. Our next Fun Friday is March thirty-first, and the theme is Cowboy Day. We're excited to have hamburgers fresh off the grill. This quarter, all students downloaded the Five Star app. Teachers can assign us points, and we can redeem these points for items such as speakers, AirPod cases, Croc Charms, and Uno cards. Our WASC chair has finished the report for the school, and we will be getting ready for the team to visit May first through the third. Last month, the College and Career Center held weekly financial aid workshops and raffles for seniors who completed their FAFSA and CADA. Although Cal Grant Priority Deadline has passed, students can submit their FAFSA or CADA by September second if they are planning to attend a California Community College. Nuevo Vista students toured San Joaquin Valley College Campus in Ontario earlier this month. Our students learned how to take their blood pressure, use a conduit bender, and customize a prescription. The Aztec Service Club has started working on a new project in collaboration with the Magic Yarn Project, a volunteer effort to make magical fun wigs out of yarn for childrens and teens who have lost their hair due to cancer and other health issues. The year we are, this year, we are unraveling and organizing, will be, the yarn we are unraveling and organizing will be used to make princess wigs that resemble Ariel, Moana, Rapunzel, and more. We can't forget about Pat and Jack Sparrow, too. We will continue these efforts for the remainder of quarter three and into quarter four as well. If you would like to help with these projects or others like it, visit www.jessserved.org to find local service projects near you. Our Yearbook Club is working hard on submitting the final draft on March fifteenth. We are very excited to see what the work that we've done all year will look like once it comes to life. Our E L facilitators are almost finished with LPAC testing. S-PAC is coming up, and we will be starting the California Science Test on March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. The rest of testing will continue through the month of our month of March and continue through April twenty-eighth. And that's what's been happening at Nuevo Vista. Thank you very much.
Very good, Ally. Thank you for being here. Thank you, ladies, for all that you do in leading and steering the culture of your campus. And I think Kayla, we'll see each other tomorrow. I'm going to film the superintendent's monthly minute with our communications team, so I'll see you tomorrow. And that's it for our student board reports.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson, and thank you, ladies, for your service. Thanks for being here tonight, and thanks for the great reports. So we're going to some recognition. Mr. Dubrowski, we're going to be coming down.
Yes, please, if the, if the board could come.
Okay, so the George, if the board would please join me. The first one is Recognize Patriot High School's Mock Trial Competition Awards.
All right, well, the board is getting ready. I'm going to read a little bit about Mock Trial. Mock Trial is a nationwide competition that is designed for students in grades nine through twelve to study legal field-related professions up close and in depth. Through performance-based education, the program furthers an understanding of both content and processes of our legal system. Administration would like to congratulate the PHS Mock Trial Team for their remarkable achievement at this year's competition on Saturday, February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. The team of Patriot High School students of all grade levels competed with high school teams from across the county, arguing cases in front of real judges and scored by real attorneys. Three students won the following individual awards. So as I call your name, if you could come up and shake the hands of the board. First, we have Ethan Flores, twelfth grade, second place for Outstanding Prosecution Witness.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have Javier Orozco Sebaños, ninth grade, first place for Outstanding Clerk. Right, and last but not least, we have Fatima Garcia, twelfth grade, second place for Outstanding Prosecution Witness. All right. And I wanted to congratulate all of the Mock Trial participants and the faculty and staff members that helped them on their journey. So congratulations to all.
Now, our next item is our Monthly Best of the Best. So each month, we recognize our outstanding employees through our Best of the Best program. These employees are all nominated by their colleagues all around the district, and they are selected for the impact that they have on JUSD students and staff. And this evening, as I said, we are recognizing our Best of the Best for the month of February, and I'll ask that they come forward and accept their certificate from the board and stick around for a picture, as you just saw. The first one is the Administrative Secretary for our Student Welfare and Supports Department, Ms. Jessica Diaz. And I'll share a few words about Ms. Diaz as she approaches. Ms. Diaz ensures the virtual learning program is running smoothly. She assists with processing all department time cards, paperwork, student attendance, and so much more. She is truly a team player. Thank you for all you do for the department and for the district. Jessica. Congratulations, Jessica. Next is one of our dual immersion teachers from West Riverside Elementary. She teaches TK. She's wonderful. Ms. Elsa Buenrostro. Ms. Buenrostro is an esteemed veteran of the TK Kinder Department for over twenty-five years. Her knowledge of the curriculum and excitement to, and her excitement to teach truly makes her something special. Along with her yearly class tea parties, Ms. Buenrostro is the head of the Cultural Night, Noche de Cultura at West Riverside, which is a huge yearly event. Her hard work and dedication to her students and the school site truly make her Best of the Best. Thank you, Ms. Buenrostro. Congratulations to all of our Best of the Best. Thank you.
Next, we'd like to recognize our Bilingual Educator Succeeding Together Award winners. On April twenty-first, the Riverside County Office of Education and CABE will honor this year's Bilingual Educator Succeeding Together, or Best Award recipients. The goal of this program is to recognize outstanding educators who are working hard at closing the achievement gap. The Board and Administration would like to congratulate the Best Award winners that I'm about to list, and as I say your name, can you please come up in much the same way? Administrator of the Year, Norma Arvayio, Principal at Aina Arbuckle Elementary. All right, Norma couldn't be here tonight. Teacher of the Year, Isidro Sines, teacher at Patriot High School. Next, Para Educator of the Year, Kimberly Tapia, bilingual language tutor at Patriot High School. Next is Support Personnel of the Year, Jessica Raya, Language Proficiency Evaluator at the Parent Center. Next is Parent Community Volunteer, Rosa Ramirez, parent volunteer at Hoopa Middle and Patriot High School. And I don't know if Mrs. Ramirez knows this yet, but she's going to be recognized as the countywide recipient as well. And then finally, at, at the banquet, Mariana Salazar, a student at Hoopa Valley High School, will receive a one thousand dollar scholarship.
All right, and so the last of these, these kinds of recognitions is recognize awards from the California School Public Relations Association. So on the evening of March third, the California Schools Public Relations Association, also known as CALSPRA, which is the leading organization for school PR and communications, held their annual award ceremony, and we are proud to share tonight that JUSD's communications team was recognized six times that evening, including three awards of merit in the multimedia visual communications category, one award of merit in the feature and editorial writing category, and two awards of excellence in the community engagement campaign category for campaigns around JUSD's vision for the future and a hiring campaign. Our communications team is here tonight. They don't, there's not certificates for the board to distribute or present, but they have brought their awards. And so I present our team, Anydia Rojas Del Real, Markel Grabo, and they are led by our director, Jackie Paul. And so could you bring those up, please, ladies?
All right, onto number twelve, Recognize National School Bus Drivers' Day. Mrs. Ford.
Thank you. So each April, we celebrate National School Bus Drivers' Recognition Day, recognizing and honoring our dedicated bus drivers and their contributions to our students. We're excited to celebrate our bus drivers with food and festivities on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, from nine thirty to eleven thirty A M., and that's in the Transportation Department. We invite all of you to join us at that time.
Thank you, Mrs. Ford. Item thirteen, Recognize Funding for Career Technical Education Incentive Grants. Mr. Dubrowski.
Thank you. The C D E recently notified us that fund, ongoing funding for the Career Technical Education Incentive Grant has been awarded in the amount of six hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred forty-nine dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Dubrowski. Onto Board Member Comments. Thank you, Mr. Dubraski. Onto Board Member Comments, number 14, Mrs. Regal. You start.
Thank you. I just have a few notes. Well, it's sort of long, but I'll try to make this as quick as possible. I did receive word about the passing of Judy Lynch, and I didn't know her when she was an educator, but she was always actively involved in our community and just the kindest person. And so just even knowing the demeanor and her mannerisms and just how polite she is, I was just so proud that she was an educator within our district and, you know, my condolences go to the Lynch family. And then Kelly Ramirez, oh my goodness, I'm so excited for your appointment. I've known you for, I don't know how many years now, and just watch you go through the rings. I mean, I'm gonna honestly miss you teaching economics at Patriot High School. You really, you molded a lot of students and really taught them about financial responsibility. And it's gonna be missed, but I am so excited for you to see you grow through our district and know that you're just gonna knock it out of the park. So congratulations. And then mock trial, you know, this is something that we anticipate every year, and just Ethan Javier and Fatima, congratulations. This is just such a niche market that you're focusing on, and I'm just so proud of your achievements. So may you continue to progress on that, and we're gonna see your name highlighted in the future. And then best of the best, Jessica and Elsa, thank you so much for your commitment to our students and our schools. It really takes a community and, you know, you're shining through that, and I just want to thank you for all your efforts as you continue to work really hard, but it doesn't go unnoticed. So congratulations. And then bilingual winners, yes, we have, I think, 20 plus languages in our district, but to even, I'm sorry, what was it, 30 plus? Oh, excuse me. But just thank you so much for, you know, your hard work on that and, you know, here your place again, your ranking. And as a district, we're so proud to have you part of that. And National School Bus Drivers Day, they are saints behind the wheels. You know, when my kids, we still had busing in our area when they were younger, and I would wait at that bus stop, and there's a curve before they get up to the bus stop over off of the 18th Fairway and Indian Hills. And I could hear the kids on the bus. Just bless your hearts. I just don't know how you could do this every day, but I thank you. And so this is a day that really means a lot to me, especially as a parent of former students that rode that, and you continue to do so. And, but the students love getting on that bus. That's something that they always talk about. You, they talk about their bus driver or something for the day or something that just reminds them. So you're also leaving an impression on them and that special mark where you're really important to them. So thank you. And then also, I just wanted to mention on March 19th, Harupa Valley Dopta Family is going to be hosting an Easter toy and food distribution. You can go to their website or check some of the social media avenues. This is at 6109 Lemonade Avenue. So please spread the word. I believe the district did send out communications about the toy and food distribution. So check your, your emails for that and hope to see you. I will be volunteering. And student board members, love to have you back. We missed you last month. And Ally, you've done this before. I know you have. You, you were so smooth in delivering all the information. You didn't pause. Great job, great job. But thank you for the updates, hearing a lot about the senior activities coming in. And then the incoming freshmen with that is, is great to hear that the schools are really thriving and moving forward and staying active. So great job. And then also wanted to highlight Congressman Takano will be conducting a town hall on March 14th at the VFW. You can look at his website or his social media page. The address is 8607 Mission Boulevard. That is tomorrow evening. So hope to see some of the community members and people within the district there. And then Rubito High School, yes, that was incredible with the theater of the Elliott Duchan Theater. It is stunning. I don't think I've seen anything that nice in our area or in our county. It truly is magnificent. So I want to thank our facilities team really to go through and find something that was great and what our schools deserve. But the choir and just the acoustics when they were singing, I don't know, they needed microphones because it just, the way the, the design of the building, it really carried the music. It didn't echo, but it just delivered that music and it sounds impressive. So I know Mr. Lynn and Mrs. Choi are gonna be so excited to have a lot more performances. And I don't know, maybe Patriot and Haruba Valley may be dialing up and asking to borrow it. It was just truly phenomenal and look forward to seeing so much taking place in that. And I believe that is all I have for right now. So thank you, President Garcia.
Thank you, Trustee Regal. Trustee DiWaller.
Thank you, President Garcia. Good evening. We just recognized students, staff, and more than $675,000 of grant money. We will soon hear about our language census that shows that nearly a third of our students are learning English along with the rest of the curriculum. While Spanish is by far the largest non-English language there, and I counted them, there were 25 others named on the list, but there were also a column for unknown and a column for others. So the number could be bigger than 26. But a large number, 25, 27, 26, whatever it is, it speaks well of our diversity and points to the importance of bilingual education. There are also a couple of items on the consent agenda that are worthy of calling out for more attention. The first is that Southern California Edison is gonna help us install 109 electric vehicle chargers spread across many of our school sites. SCE is gonna pay upfront for the installation and upgrades of the infrastructure, the conduit, the cable and the wiring, the panels and stuff that we need to be able to get to the charge stations, and they will reimburse us 2,900 per EV charging station, and that's more than half of the final cost. The district will recoup its $253,000 through fees for public access. And these chargers will complement the solar panel arrays that we have at many of our school sites and help us prepare for the coming energy change. The board is also being asked to approve a comprehensive safety plan for each school site. The California Education Code states that these plans must consider a wide range of policies, expectations, and procedures, ranging from dress codes to active shooter and hazardous materials protocols. The ed code also stipulates that each school site shall have an active school site safety committee that consists of the principal or a designated, one teacher who is representative, who is a representative of the teachers union, one classified employee who is a representative of the recognized classified employee organization, and one parent guardian whose child attends the school. The ed code also allows for additional other members if desired. Each of these plans is very comprehensive and more than 50 pages long, and I want to thank the members of all two dozen of these committees. They have done good work to ensure that we parents know that our kids are as safe as they can be when they go to school. I also want to thank Dell Tannery, Barnhart Rees Construction, the Dell Soul PTA, Chipotle, Direct Transport, and Ms. Rose Gonzalez for their donations to JUSD totaling more than $13,000. These generous gifts will allow us to do more for our students and staff. Thank you for your gifts and for your vote of confidence in what I think is one of the stronger districts in the county. Apparently, Fitch Ratings agrees with me as they have raised the rating on our Series 2002 Bonds from A to A+, in part because of a favorable long-term liability burden. And our liability burden is low, partly because this board has chosen to follow state law and not incur any unnecessary liabilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee DiWaller. Trustee Bradford.
Good eve, good evening, everybody. I'm happy to see we have lots to celebrate. To our spectacular Patriot students at the mock trials, good on you. This is fabulous training for your future selves. To our best of the best employees, you and your peers who nominated you for your hard work are wonderful. Thank you for choosing JUSD for your careers. To our bilingual educators, estoy muy orgullosa de todos ustedes y de su trabajo. Gracias. I'm taking Spanish in our adult education this, this semester, so necesite que practicar. How am I doing? Uh, ustedes están muy amables. To our bus drivers on National Bus Drivers Day, thank you for taking care of our precious cargo. You know how much I love bus drivers, just like our custodians, crossing guards, and cafeteria workers who are angels in aprons. Since our last meeting, I attended the Riverside County Office of Education State of Education Luncheon, and I imagine you will hear more from Superintendent Hanson about that. I participated with parents and Saturday School students at Sunny Slope Elementary to plant their new garden. Our district maintenance and operations crew had installed raised beds and surrounded them with bark mulch, so the students were very proud and excited to plant seeds and vegetables. I was pleased to see how polite they were with our volunteers from our healthy Harupa community group, and they were very kind with each other as each group of students showed the next set of students what to do. I also attended the inauguration of the Rubito High School Concert Hall, and it was magnificent. I wish all of you could have seen the happiness of our students who sang and played their orchestral instruments, which, by the way, our district provides. And since we're all Harupa folks here tonight, I can tell you how I feel. When I hear people from Riverside talk about 92509 like it's the projects, I want to say something nasty back, but I don't because I believe in be the change you want to see. It's hard, isn't it? So on Friday night, when I heard our band teacher, Ms. Choi, say, "These students are the smartest and deserve such a marvelous building as this new concert hall," I thought, "Right on, Ms. Choi." I am very proud to stand up for all of our Harupa Unified Students. And by the way, we got the attention of the Riverside Philharmonic Board President who is there that night, and she said she'll bring its orchestra over for some mentoring side by side with our students. So speaking of how smart Rubito students are, when my friend Lisa Brown taught French at Rubito, she taught a full day of classes. How about that Riverside? There were so many students at Rivers, at Rubito who wanted to learn French that she had a full class load all day. You tell me we don't have smart students in our district. So that's just between us and Rubens, right? Okay. And speaking of languages, I want to make a comment on our languages report. I counted, I counted, more than 30 languages spoken in our district. I think this is so marvelous to have our students enriched by the cultures represented from Arabic and French to Tamil, Telugu, and Urdu. Stephanie, I'm done.
Thank you, Trustee Bradford. Trustee Navarro.
Thank you, President Garcia. Welcome, everybody. If it looks like I'm exhausted and glowing at the same time, it's because on March 3rd, I introduced a new baby girl into our family. So thank you. My second one, hashtag girl dad. Speaking of bus drivers, you know, I grew up in the rural, rural area of Quell Valley. Most of you guys know it's Menifee now. And we had to take the bus every day. And at that time, I considered the bus driver my best friend. I was always worried around Christmas time, Dad, or we got a present for the bus driver. Dad, it's Valentine's Day. We gotta bring the bus driver a Valentine's Day. And I just loved it. I think taking the, the bus every day to school was just a great way to interact, not only with the, the students on there, but like I said, the, that was their first adult that you saw in the morning, and it kind of reminded me of a quote. "School bus driver, you are sometimes the first smiling adult a child sees each morning and the last before they get home. You always brave the weather to get our kids' safety where they need to while being a shining example as you do it." I regretfully inform though, after three years of begging, they never let me ride, drive the school bus. So fortunately, it didn't happen. I also attended the, the opening of the new Elliott Duchan Concert Hall, and I tell you, Trustee Regal is not lying. It was amazing. I don't think we needed speakers at all. Those kids shone. I felt like I had paid $100 to go see an orchestra play. It was that, that amazing. And as my trustee to my right over here, Bradford said that there was some representatives for the Philharmonics, and they said that they will be there poaching and trying to get those kids to, to join their groups. So but not only did I think as a board members and, and staff that were there, I felt the students, you could probably attest this, Kayla, had pride on that new building. They were proud to have this new building and maybe to rub it into the other schools as well. But yeah, it was just a great time, and I can't look forward to seeing some concerts at that hall. So that, that was amazing. And then lastly, I am so excited about the, the grant for the CTE education grant. That is amazing. Like CTE is a source of strong foundation of technical knowledge. It provides skills that can, provide skills that will advance academic status and prepare our kids both colleges and a career options. Critical thinking, teamwork, leadership, those are just some of the skills that your students will learn in these programs. So please, for parents who are, you're thinking about or on the edge, on the border, you will 100% see your students benefit from this program. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Navarro. And congratulations. I don't think I've actually told you that in person, Trustee Navarro, and I, you've contributed to International Women's Month. So with your ladies there at home. So congratulations, Kelly Ramirez, for your appointment, and I know the board sees a lot of confidence in you, and we look forward to your success in your new role. And speaking about Judy Lynch, and I, I've known Judy probably about 18 years, I think, and she was one of the first teachers to invite me into the classroom as a line club member. We used to do Flag Day for fourth graders, and at Rustic Lane, she was probably the first teacher, I think, who invited us in. And so we've known her and Dick for, for many years, and I think my condolences to Dick and the family. So. Had an opportunity this, this last month to visit the print shop and MOT with Mrs. Ford. Sylvia Castaneda gave me a tour of the print shop, and it's quite amazing what we can do here at Harupa. And, and so I thank Sylvia for that. And also Bob Schmalak over at MOT. I, I've never actually seen a bus on a lift, so it's amazing to see a big bus uplifted that way. And one of our mechanics, I think our head mechanic there is a graduate of our auto mechanic program from Harupa Valley High School. So something we can be proud of. Read Across America was last week. I believe it was last week, and I was invited over to TROTH. And that was quite an experience, and I really enjoyed that, and I look forward to that every year. And as everyone's said, the Rubito High School Elliott Duchan Concert Hall was, was really amazing, and I had some friends that recorded that, that were there, recorded it on their phone, and it sounds amazing on the phone. It's just, it's such a great hall and such a great honor for Mr. Duchan. And, and as some of my fellow trustees, I think Trustee Bradford mentioned, Virginia Blumenthal. She, she knows music, and she's, serves as president of the Riverside Philharmonic, and she was very amazed. So I mean, that, that really says something about what we have here in Harupa and what we have at Rubito. So congratulations there. And as Trustee Regal said, Mark Takano, and actually he'll be joined by Sabrina Cervantes as well tomorrow evening at the VFW here down the street. So if you want to join that, come out and listen to what they have to say. And for my fellow board members here, I just wanted to, to remind you that this week is legislative week, this week and next week. Sabrina Cervantes's team is having a meeting on Thursday. If you want to sign up for that, contact Denise Lopez. And I think Senator Roth, I believe is next week. We're working on scheduling those, and these are opportunities for us to, to advocate for, for education. And thank you to all the awardees tonight. There's so many, so many people, and I'm so happy and so proud to serve on this board with all of you doing great things out there. And finally, thanks to our students, school board members, all women, great job. And just remind you that I know you've got things to do and probably homework and stuff, but if you do stick around, that, you know, you're allowed to ask questions on any of the items. You're allowed to have a preferential vote. So if you do stick around, just know that, that you're allowed to do that. So thank you all, and we'll move on to the next item. It's just public verbal comments. And before we get started, I'm gonna read the disclaimer. I've got two cards here. And so I'm going to read this, the guidelines for public comments for everyone. So the Hoopah Unified School District Board of Education encourages and invites the public to comment on items listed on its agenda or on matters within its subject jurisdiction. To help conduct the business of the board in an orderly fashion, we request, we request as follows. If you would like to address the board, please fill out a speaker card located on the table at the back of the boardroom. And when completed, please hand your card to the superintendent's attendant, assistant, Mrs. Worley. Number two, the public comments section on the agenda is the time and place for members of the public to make comments or request that an item be placed on a future agenda unless otherwise determined by the board president. Number three, generally, individual speakers will be limited to three minutes, three continuous minutes. Depending on the number of items on the agenda and the number of speaker cards, the board president may establish shorter time limits for speakers. Speakers may not yield their time to others. The board may terminate public comments when such comments become repetitious or when time is required by the board for other business. Number four, please wait until the board president calls you to the microphone to speak. Unless recognized by the board president, members of the public are requested to refrain from comments so as not to disrupt the board's business. Number five, under the provisions of the Brown Act, the board is prohibited from taking action on oral requests not listed on the agenda, but the board may refer to the matter to refer the matter to staff or to a subsequent meeting. Number six, if you have a concern about an employee in the district, we request that you follow the public complaint procedures as provided in Board Policy and Administrative Regulation thirteen twelve point one. And number seven, normal standards of decorum and courtesy should be observed by all speakers. Number eight, as a courtesy to others, please limit remarks to the matter being heard, be brief, and refrain from being repetitive. Number nine, if you are reading from a prepared text you intend to distribute to the board, please give copies to the superintendent's assistant for distribution. Okay, with that, first one I have here is Mr. David Williamson.
Good evening. Can you hear me? I prepared a statement. I'm going to read it to you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and fellow residents of Harupa Valley. Thank you for allowing me to exercise my First Amendment rights here this evening as a natural born citizen of the United States of America. My reason for being here tonight is to speak on half of everyone who is being silenced in the workplace and in the public square. I am so saddened by the fact that someone at JUSD has chosen to violate the First Amendment rights of a teacher named Jessica Tapia. Whoever is responsible for this has chosen to ignore the United States Constitution and the rights that it guarantees a free society. Perhaps this person is unaware of constitutional law, or even worse, they don't care. Either way, the fact that all of you allowed her to be terminated is a shame. In a society, the only thing necessary for an evil to occur is for a moral people to do nothing. It appears that you have chose to do nothing. In regards to Title Nine, you have violated the rights of one of the listed protected classes and elevated another protected class's rights above that one. So you violated Title Nine and its protections. Furthermore, if you think that you're going to spend the taxpayers' money on lawyer fees to deny Jessica Tapia her First Amendment rights, please put out a notice that that's what you are going to do with the people's education dollars. Then I ask you nicely to publicly announce that on your website so that everyone has an opportunity to comment. If you choose not to, it will be announced anyways in the local newspapers. Finally, in closing, I know that there are many courageous people here at JUSD, and now is the time to stand up for Jessica Tapia and support her with your voice. I pray that you'll do the right thing. Thank you, board and fellow citizens of the United States of America, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. All right, next I've got Ms. Virginia Solis.
Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts on this also. Tonight, I would like to speak on the issue of this teacher, Jessica Tapia, who was fired due to her religious beliefs. As school board members, you are called to uphold righteousness in our schools, both from teachers and from the students, to instill in them the need to do what is right, to not steal, to not use profane language, to not lie, to not treat others with disrespect. And yet this district board has done the total opposite. If in this school district we have policies that are deceiving parents and promoting deceptiveness from their children, you are failing both the parents and their children. The fact that the past thirty years this district has reserved the position to take children off school premises for confidential medical treatments without their parents' knowledge or permission is deplorable. I have to question what kind of medical treatment you would take our children out of the school for. To have an appendectomy, to treat them for cancer, to have cavities filled? Do you know what reason they are taken off school premises for over the past thirty years? Is to have abortions, to take our daughters out of the school to have abortions without their parents' knowledge. And I'm sure in the past, these abortions performed on these underage girls at the most important time of their lives, when they should have had their parents' loving input, are deprived of this by this district's deceptive and treacherous policy. And what could be worse than this past thirty years of undermining the family unity and the relationship by these policies? The new and more updated policy to destroy a child's future by promoting and indoctrinating them into the transgender lifestyle. And the cherry on top of all this is that the deception that will affect these children for the rest of their lives. You're encouraging these children to hide this from their parents instead of encouraging them to seek their parents' input and direction at this time in their lives. And this brings me to the subject of Jessica Tapia and her not only unfair but deplorable firing by the Unified School District here in this community. Why was she fired? Because she refused to cave to your pressure for her to lie and deceive parents. A number of you tonight have made comments about your children in this district for the past number of years. And even you with your new baby. Would any of you want teachers, schools to undermine your position as parents, to take your children out of school, to deceive you and to hide from you the most important issues in your children's lives? And let you have encouraged this within the district? And now you're punishing this teacher for standing against this?
Mrs. Solis, your three minutes are up. Can you please wrap it up?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. And that concludes our public verbal comments. On to item D, administrative reports and written communications. D one, announce initial district proposal for negotiations with NEA Harupa. Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, President Garcia. The board has reviewed and closed session the district's preliminary proposal for negotiations with NEA Harupa. The proposal is being publicized at this time in order to permit the public comments in the verbal hearing session. It will be held at the regular board meeting on April seventeenth next month. Thank you. That's all at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. D two, accept the initial negotiations proposal for NEA Harupa.
Similarly, the district has received the initial negotiations proposal from NEA Harupa for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The proposal, their proposal is being publicized again at this time in order to permit public comments at the verbal hearing session that will be held at the regular board meeting next month. It is recommended that the board receive the proposal and withhold comment at this time. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Item D three, report on the language census report. Mr. Dubrovsky.
Thank you. The R thirty language census report is something that we we give every year and and talk to the board about the results. And you've already heard some of those results from from two of our esteemed board members. But I'm going, you have as an attachment, the actual report itself, but I'm going to go over just a few highlights in this presentation. And that looks really blurry, so I'm going to have to do more talking. So in in JUSD, forty-eight percent of our students are English only, and that's the blue part of the pie. Thirty percent of our students are learning English as classified as English learners. And then twenty-two percent are fluent English proficient. So those are are one of two categories. So either students who, when they entered our district, were reported that they spoke two languages and were tested and found initially fluent. So they're considered initially fluent English proficient. Or students who entered as English learners and over the course of time developed both English and academic knowledge to the point where they could be reclassified as reclassified fluent English proficient learners. So that comprises both students, but you can see that those are the way that our 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 district shakes out in terms of students who are learning English and already have learned English or only English. The next slide. All right, come on now. There we go, is I'm going to try and take a very delicate road here and say that we have more than two dozen different languages spoken in our district and and not call out anyone being right or wrong. There are on that form, you know, we have, we have a list of students listed as as other, meaning they didn't have enough students to classify to add a category. But but there are several different languages in there. Of our English learners, Spanish, of course, is the dominant language. Five thousand two hundred ninety-three of our five thousand four hundred thirty-four English learners do speak Spanish. So that is far and away the most predominant language. So we have a hundred and forty-one English learners who speak a different language. And the three most common would be Punjabi, who we have twenty-nine students speaking that language. Chinese, there are twenty, and Arabic, there are sixteen. And then, you know, lots of other languages, more than two dozen. Now, reclassification, we, in in past years, I've talked about how this is a, it's a difficult to compare year to year reclassification details because the state has repeatedly changed the bar. And so that what constitutes a reclassification one year may not the other. But I'm happy to report that last year and this year are identical apples to apples comparisons. And so as you can see, last year, we reclassified two hundred forty-six students. This year, we reclassified two hundred ninety-seven students, so a twenty percent increase from the year prior. And that's something to be very proud of. So that to be reclassified, not only do our students have to demonstrate oral language proficiency in English, but they also have to demonstrate academic proficiency through our CASP exams or other other means. So it means that our students are doing quite well when they're able to be reclassified from English learner to fluent English proficient. So we're quite excited by that increase in students this year. And then finally, the the people that provide services to our English learners, there are nine hundred eleven teachers, all of whom are authorized and credentialed to work and provide services to students learning English. And then sixty-six paraprofessionals, which would be our bilingual tutors who work primarily with our our English learners who are at the the one and two level of English proficiency. So that is our annual report on the R thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Dubrovsky. Any questions, comments? Mrs. Trustee Bradford.
Mr. Dubrovsky, the one that delighted me was to see a family report Mayan was spoken at home. To see that preserved, I am, I was so pleased.
That is exciting.
Of course, I'm waiting to see Swedish pop up, but I doubt that's. When I was in Sweden, I stopped somebody and I I always started my conversations with, excuse me, do you speak sweet English? And one woman turned around, she looked at me practically disgusted. And she said, this was in Stockholm, and she said, "Everyone speaks English." Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Bradford. Anybody else? Trustee Getweller.
So this reclassification, when we do that, it comes at a financial cost, right? Because we're no longer getting paid for having unduplicated students? How do we, is there any incentive for reclassification? Or we just do it because it's the right thing to do?
It's just the moral incentive that it's the right thing to do for our students to be successful. And and there is a lot of crossover between our students who are English learners and our students who receive free or reduced lunch. So many of those who may become reclassified don't drop off the unduplicated count because they fall into into a different category as well.
Trustee Navarro.
Just question why, or what does the reclassify classification changes look like for the state? Like, why do they change them? Why do they, what does that look like? And what is typical changes?
Yeah, so so for, we've had different English language exams. We had a an English language exam for quite some time, and then and then not one, and then one that was the new and improved one. And then they set the bar differently in terms of what they would consider possible. And then for a few years, districts were allowed to kind of set their own reclassification criteria. And then the state changed that and said, no, this this now is the criteria. So it just had been, there'd been several different iterations of of changes. And fortunately, that hasn't happened in the last year. So we'll keep our fingers crossed that we keep, we keep the same bar.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I just, I just have one comment, Mr. Dubrovsky. So you said almost more than half of our teachers are providing this service, nine hundred something teachers.
All of our teachers do do provide services to our English learners, and they are all credentialed to do so.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, moving on to D four, review tentative tentative scheduled for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three awards and graduation ceremonies.
Yeah, it's hard to imagine that we're approaching graduation season already. It's on on this infamous day of March thirteenth, the day we, three years ago, closed schools. But yeah, so the the dates are there for you, and we're for you to review.
Thank you, Mr. Dubrovsky, and my fellow board members. Take a look at the graduations and just let me know what your preferences are, and I'll take a look at those, and we'll make those assignments at our next meeting. All right, D five, other administrative reports and written communications. Dr. Hanson.
Thank you, President Garcia. And as we are preparing for our JUSD snapshot, I would like to share a little bit about the RCOE State of Education Address. It was really, it was a nice event, more so because Harupa Unified was was highlighted and featured pretty much throughout throughout the the presentation. You know, in Harupa, we have a vision for the future established. We've got pillars that we're focusing on. Two of those pillars, innovation, student achievement and innovation, and systems of support really have to do with not only the academic achievement of our students, but also the supports that we provide. And we were highlighted for for much of the work that we are doing that supports our own vision that we have here in Harupa Unified, primarily around early literacy, financial literacy partnerships under the Achievement and Innovation sections, as well as the Dell Tech Program. And that was featured through a video that they that they presented during the during Dr. Gomez's presentation. And then by way of systems of support, the work that we're doing that supports the vision that we have here in Harupa and was highlighted by the county was the work that we're doing with our mental health through our People's Services Division and our PICO Department, as well as the Educational Equity Work that we're doing through, again, the People's Services Division and our Educational Equity Departments. And so it was very nice to see Harupa Unified highlighted throughout that presentation and validated for the work that we are doing in support of our own vision, but as well as the support of the vision of our county. And then lastly, I too enjoyed the concerts and being in the Elliot Duchan Concert Hall. It's it's crazy to think that we started that project over three years ago. I remember walking with engineers and architects and and acousticians through the RCC Concert Hall looking for what we were trying to accomplish here in Harupa. And we were so, you know, we were so focused on 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 the music arts and the sound and how that would be perceived in the facility. And I want to thank our our facilities department, Mrs. Ford, the Business Services Division, for driving that forward and being able to bring it to fruition. It was an exciting and wonderful event. And as as excited and honored as Mr. Duchan was, I know that he's more excited for the years of experiences that our students will have here in Harupa Unified School District, as well as the community at large. And so that was just a tremendous event, and I was happy to spend it with you all in that environment. And then lastly, we do have our little And then lastly, we do have our little. J U S D snapshot that we'd like to share with you, just highlighting some of the the wonderful things that took place throughout the district this month. So that that's all we have tonight, or at least on my part, I do wanna, I know we still have Jackie here, and wanna again acknowledge and recognize. The hard work of our Communications Department, I thought when I was down there for that. Award ceremony, I was going to have to ask for one of our box trucks to come down and pick up all the awards, because they just kept. Saying Harupa Unified, come to the front, so again, great work on behalf of our Communications Department. And Mr. Brooks in our Human Resources Resources Division, job well done, thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Fantastic job, and okay, so. We're all good? Need a break, okay? So we're on to item number E, or item E, and if you need to, please refresh your your screens here so we can vote. All right, so item E, approve and adopt except routine action items by consent.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Trustee Navarro, second by Trustee Regal. Call for the vote, please. Motion carries five zero. Item F, Board Action Items, F one. Approve instructional materials for review. Mister Dubrovsky.
Thank you, so we have. Quite a few instructional materials for review tonight, and it's it's a little bit of an unprecedented amount of adoptions that we're asking. To 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 go through that process, and I want to just start by talking through the process, how we got to to tonight. With you and then and then explain what happens from from here on out in the adoption process, so. In terms of the the uniqueness of right now, you know, we have for several years endeavored to. Modernize all of our textbooks, and we continue to try to to on during during a cycle. Keep current textbooks, which obviously is important for, you know, I don't need to explain that, but. And and we found ourselves in a unique situation this year, because as as you've heard repeatedly from from Mrs. Ford, we have. Several one-time budget sources or funding sources, and. You know, the best thing to do with one-time budgets is to spend them on one-time items, and so with the. The purchase of a of a large textbook system is a one-time purchase, so. So, Dr. Corbin, who's the Director of Curriculum Assessment, and I, we, we talked through. Capacity, because typically we would bring to you in a given year, one or two adoptions, and in, as you can see tonight, we're bringing fifteen, so we. Um, you know, I wanna, I wanna commend. Um, Dr. Corbin and her department with with going through this work and the many, many teachers that were involved in that selection process, but. You know, Cabinet agreed that. You know, that this was a, this was a unique opportunity when we could really modernize many of our texts, so. What happens when, once we make that decision is we take a look, and I'll just use math as an example, as we look at the. List of approved materials from the state. And then often there are county R C O E led either either workshops or or. Reviews of materials and the district leadership reviews those materials, comes up with about four top candidates. And then we convene a committee, and that committee. In the ele- in the case of elementary schools is quite large, because you have seventeen schools, we have eight grade levels, and so we need all schools to be represented, we need all grade levels to be represented. And and really uniquely have, you know, a a good amount of teachers, then. When you look at, say, middle school math, it's quite smaller, because we have three schools, and so in in choosing a seventh grade. Book, that committee is going to be a little bit smaller, but they also have a close relationship with their with their peers and are able to. Kind of report back during that process, so. We convene the committees. And the committee receives some training, in the case of math, regarding the new framework that, you know, kind of leads, shows the the direction the state is leading towards in math instruction. And and then we have each of the four textbook companies come out and present. And and provide a staff development about what their system has, why it's the best one ever, and why they should choose that. Um, and so they spend a lot of time with the textbook provider, and then they spend time with the materials, and then. Using some some criteria, they whittle that choice down to two. So they go from four to two, once we're down to the top two contenders, that's the 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 teachers have chosen out of the four. Then they pilot both of them in their classes. And they they choose a a spat, a a set system of time where they're going to use that exclusively with their kids. They they use it, they plan with it, they. Survey the kids about how they feel about it, and then they do the the next one. And so having used them both in the classroom, having, you know, surveyed information from kids about the way the kids felt about their interactions with that text. They then come back together as a committee and and using some criteria. Make a recommendation and say, this is, this is our winner. And once they have done that, somebody from that committee. Comes to an instructional council meeting, which, as you recall, is one teacher from every school elected by their peers to be their representative. And then that teacher from the committee presents it to the instructional council and says, these are the choices we, you know, narrowed it down to. This is why this one wasn't better, this is why this one was better, and then we ask. The the council has time to ask questions and sort of gather information from that from that committee member. And then they vote as to whether they would recommend that. That this is something that that they believe also should go to the board. Once that recommendation is made from both the teacher committee and the instructional council, then we come to you for meeting number one. And so at meeting number one, we ask you to approve them for review, and what that means is. We will put those those texts out at both the district office and the Glen Avon Library for no less than two weeks. That's a, that's a statutory number. In order for the community to be able to review those texts and provide any feedback that they would like to do so. I can tell you that in in twelve years of doing this, generally, we don't get much if any feedback from the community, but. It is available and out there, and and certainly people can. Can add their thoughts about our our proposed adoption, so. Once that period has has finished, we come to the next board meeting. And then ask you to formally adopt that text, and that would be the final decision to actually purchase those materials, and then. Once that happens, we we purchase the materials, we we work very hard to be coming to you around now. So that we could get the teacher text additions in teachers' hands before they go home for the summer, because many of our teachers like to do a lot of planning during the summer, and we schedule trainings. For for our teachers so that they can, you know, become more familiar with the text itself. And. And so that's the process. So just to kind of give you a sense of the the books we have, so we have Envision TK six math, which is our elementary math. We have My World interactive interactive TK six social studies, elementary social studies. Carnegie Course two and three math, middle school. Medieval World and Beyond, which is our history text for grade seven. United States Through Industrialism, history text for grade eight. I don't know if I'm saying this right, but Chemins, which is our high school friends. Course Encuentros C A one through three, that's our Spanish high school. Perspectivas and Galleria, which is our Spanish for Spanish speakers course, so we have, we have Spanish. One, one, two, and three, and we have Spanish for Spanish speakers, one, two, and three, different courses and different texts. Uh, we have Comprehensive Health Skills for High School, which is our our health course. The math book I am one through three, so that's high school math. History Alive World Connections, that's world history at the high school, History Alive Pursuing American Ideals, that's US history at the high school. Economics Alive, The Power to Choose, that's that's Econ, our twelfth grade social studies, one semester course. And then Government Alive, Power, Politics, and You, and that's our our high school government, one semester course, so. All of those have been. Chosen, piloted, recommended, gone through those steps, and we then ask you to approve them for review.
Quite a selection, Mr. Dubrovsky, thank you for for that presentation, any questions? Mister Navarro, Trustee Navarro.
So I see eight-year term on pretty much all of these, that's that's basically, we use them for eight term, it's recommended to only have them for eight years, we, you know, they sometimes go longer than eight years.
Yeah, generally, that term refers to the consumable materials that we might get with the adoption. So like the workbooks, or in the case of science, we're not doing science, like maybe those those. Materials that they might use in their labs, things like that, so. We, so we we enter upon a particular term, sometimes we adopt again within that, usually not, but. Sometimes we have textbooks for a good bit longer, if, you know, at the end of eight years, if we're in a recession, or there's not funds available to re to redo. So it kind of, yeah.
It doesn't change very often.
Yeah, at the at the end of that eight years, then, if we were using consumable materials, we would have to re-enter into another contract with them to continue to provide them.
Okay, okay, Mister, we must like Jose Blanco's, I see like five, four or five of his books in there, so he must be. Authority in the in the French.
Literature, apparently.
Spanish, okay, yes, Spanish, okay.
Yeah, he must be pretty good, oh, French too, you're right.
Yeah. Yeah, then there was just one question, under the all elementary sites for the social studies. There was multiple different. Charges, like it wasn't just one standard, like I see most of them are either one sixty or two seventy per book. There was a an amount for every grade level, is there a reason why? There's different charges for every grade level?
Yeah, and not knowing a hundred percent, my my educated guess is that the materials. Are different for each grade level, so, you know, that that at at first grade, it may be more manipulatives and a smaller workbook. Whereas at sixth grade, it's going to be a larger. Workbook and and less materials and, you know, and then. Beyond that, like systems, textbook systems now have. So many different pieces of ancillary materials that I would I would imagine, and it's just the difference in what comes for each grade level.
That was what my curious, because like TK was one sixty six, and then everything afterwards dropped down, but that's because they're getting more physical materials.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that would make sense, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Navarro, Trustee Bradford.
I read the teachers' worksheets with their comments on the various ones, and I wanted to make sure. That all of these. Are going to be on display, not just the ones that the teachers preferred.
We would only display the ones that we have recommended that you adopt.
Oh, okay, because I noticed that the teachers preferred the T C I books over the the Sav- Savis. Okay, so we'll just see the the T C I then?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Okay, that clarifies my question.
Thank you, Trustee Bradford. Trustee Getweller.
I just want to make a comment, I I had heard some stories from some other districts that did not involve teachers in the selection of books, so. I I want to thank you for involving teachers for two reasons, one. We'll get the better books because they're the subject matter experts, and two. They'll be more excited about it because they chose them. So thank you, that's well done.
I agree, and that that is something that we're very proud of, is our process is is driven by teachers, and I, just to make a quick comment to call out our. Middle and high school math teachers, they did something that's been a little unprecedented, we always adopt. A middle school set and a high school set, and each group is free to choose. The the set that they choose, and the two groups came together this year and on their own volition and said. We really need the consistency of one adoption that goes from seven to twelve, and we think that will be better for our kids, so we're, we want to come together. And we want to hash it out and make one choice for for both middle and high school, and that, and they were able to do that, I think. It it really speaks to their commitment to, you know, our student success.
All right. Anybody else? We need to approve this, don't we? Move to approve. Motion by Trustee Navarro.
I'll second it.
Second by Trustee Bradford, any other questions or comments? All right, let's call for the vote.
And I just have one correction to add, I'm I'm hearing from Dr. Corbin that it's not the Glen Avon Library, it will be the Rubito Library and the district office, so I misspoke.
Motion carries five zero. All right, on to F two, approve E V charging project. Mrs. Ford.
Thank you, so in September, the board ratified three agreements with Southern California Edison to install a total of thirty six electron. Electric vehicle charging stations at Rubito High School, Harupa Valley High School, and Patriot High School. To be used by the public, including J U S D staff, the project approved in September. Operates under the. Southern California Edison's Charge Ready Schools Pilot Program. Where Southern California Edison is fully responsible for the design, the infrastructure, the installation, and the ongoing maintenance of the chargers. Tonight, in addition to this Charge Ready Schools Pilot Program. Administration has been working with Southern California Edison to install a hundred and nine. E V chargers through the Charge Ready Program. With this program, Southern California Edison will still design and install the infrastructure. But the district will be responsible for the purchase, the installation, and the maintenance of the E V chargers themselves. So administration is requesting that the board approve the second round of the E V charging project, including the purchase of a hundred and nine E V chargers. For an estimated net cost of two hundred and fifty three thousand four hundred and forty seven dollars. From video voice data communications. And make a finding that using the Sourcewell piggyback bid is the best, is in the best interest of the district. And authorize the district's energy, energy education manager to enter into any related agreements with Southern California Edison. So we're really excited about this project, will take a while to make it happen, but we're very excited about being able to take advantage of both. Um, of the Southern California Edison projects.
I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Regal. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Trustee Regal.
Thank you, President Garcia, I'm. I love this idea of being more efficient. Now that. There's going to be some sort of plan, or what is that plan, when it says E V for public, is this, you know, during business hours? And or is it people that are coming onto campus for official business?
Yeah, so we'll have certain locations that would be available for the public to use, and we would make sure that there would be no entry into campus, so if they were using it after hours for any reason. They would, um, they would not have, be able to gain access into campus.
Oh, okay, so then say. And on a Saturday morning, somebody wants to come and charge their car, they can?
Yes, but and that, and we would charge them for that electricity.
Okay, so they would pay for it, and that's also during business hours too, they would still have to pay for the charging fee?
We could, we could open it up during business, or we might not, it would depend on, you know, again, the location, we would want to make sure that we are. Not mixing the public, you know, with with our staff.
Okay, and then one more question. I mean, I, I'm not trying to be the Debbie Debbie Downer, I'm just very realistic, but vandalism, how is that going to be covered on those if that occurs?
Yeah, so on the on the program, the Charge Ready Schools Pilot Program. That went all that, all the maintenance, anything like vandalism that would require maintenance, that would be taken care of through Southern California Edison. For the for the stations that we will have, we would be responsible for taking care of any vandalism.
Okay, just so do they have something that kind of. Can minimize that risk of them, you know, being permanently damaged?
Well, I mean, we'll look at everything we possibly can to make sure that we minimize that risk.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Trustee Regal. Trustee Navarro.
I actually think I missed this meeting because I'm like, I do not remember this at all, I briefly remember reading it in the board packet, I think I actually missed that meeting when we approved this. To to speak about what Trustee Regal was saying, so when it comes to. Vandals or say accidents, if something happened to someone's car, are we liable to, so say that the over voltage, or there was a fire. Are we liable as a district for their vehicle, or if something was to happen, whether they were a employee or just someone for the public?
Yeah, there there could be potential, you know, for that, we we will plan to have it. These will be maintained, and that's why we're looking at contracting with voice data communications. So we can ensure that, you know, we have like a regular ongoing maintenance on these. and that's why we're looking at contracting with voice data communications, so we can ensure that, you know, we have like a regular ongoing maintenance on these units.
Okay. And then, just so to confirm, because I, uh, what you were telling trustee Regal is, 100% public will not be able to use it on school campus while students are in school, correct?
Yeah, we wouldn't want, we would not want to mix the public with, when we have students in school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Navarro. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mrs. Ford, and we'll call for the vote.
Mrs. Borley, I don't have an option to vote.
Motion carries five zero. Item F3. Award bid number 22-23-06TE-RBID, and that's rebid. Wireless upgrades, Mrs. Ford.
Yeah, I tricked you with an actual word in there, huh? Um, in, in February, the board rejected all wireless upgrade bids and authorized the rebid of the project. On February 10th and 17th, administration solicited bids for a complete, um, upgrade of all wireless access points for every school site to increase the speed and provide more reliable wifi for students and for staff devices. So on March 7th, the district, um, uh, received and opened the bids. The bids were reviewed and evaluated based on price, bid preparation, the contractor's references, and experience, and how well the bids align with the project requirements, with, uh, price being the single greatest factor that we use for the bids. Uh, bids were also reviewed for responsiveness. Approximately 80% of the cost of the project will be funded through E-Rate, and with the remaining cost to be paid from our special reserve funds for capital outlay. And administration is recommending that the board deem the bids from next experts and GigaCom, non-responsive, and award the bid for wireless upgrades to converge one in the amount of $1,755,143.41.
Thank you, Mrs. Ford. Move to approve. Motion by trustee Navarro.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Regal. Any questions or comments? Trustee DiWeiler.
Could you explain what E-Rate is, please?
So, E-Rate is, um, it actually, you will see, you will see it on your bill. It'll come on your cellular bill, it comes on your phone, if you have an analog phone anymore, and it will come on your analog phone bill. Um, but it's a small amount of tax that then goes into the federal E-Rate program, and that, uh, offers for schools and, um, libraries to be able to provide, uh, to, to provide funding, uh, that you apply for, but provide funding to be able to provide internet access. So that pays for our connection through the county, for our internet connection, uh, pays for 80% of that as well. Um, and it depends on your community as to how much, um, of the percentage it will pay for. So sometimes we're at 90%, sometimes we're at 80, other times, uh, other communities might be a little bit lower than that, but, uh, it's a resource that's federal-funded.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mrs. Ford. We'll call for the vote. Motion carries five zero. Item F4. Award bid number 22-23-05PD Patriot High School Stadium Lighting and Scoreboard Project, Mrs. Ford.
So this is the start of our project. Um, on January 11th and 18th, uh, district staff solicited bids for the Patriot High School Stadium Lighting and Scoreboard Project. The project's scope of work includes installing six stadium lights, a new scoreboard, and miscellaneous utilities and site work. Uh, seven bids were received by the bid deadline, and there is a schedule of bids that were received, uh, that's included in your backup material. So at this time, administration is recommending the board award a contract in the amount of $1,259,000 to the lowest responsive bidder, which was FEC Electric, Inc., for bid number 222305PD Patriot High School Stadium Lighting and Scoreboard.
Move to approve.
Motion by trustee Regal.
Second.
Second by trustee DiWeiler. Any questions or comments? Trustee Regal.
I just want to comment that I love to see this progress. I know that Patriot has been without, or really didn't have all the extras like the other two schools do. So, um, as a former parent and all the parents currently, they were just, um, anticipating and exciting. And, you know, hoping one day this will be a stadium, but, um, also just ironically, I was receiving messages about when Patriot will get this, and here it's on the agenda, so, good job, guys.
And, and we'll keep working toward the rest of it as well.
Thank you for that question. Any other questions? Trustee Navarro.
Maybe we can have a line for advertisement to help pay for some of this. A lot of money compared to what we were paying for the, uh, the phone wireless upgrades, so, but yeah, that was it.
All right, anybody else? All right, let's call for the vote. Motion carries five zero. Item F5. Award bid number 22-23-02PD Rebid, Tross Street Elementary School Modernization Project, Mrs. Ford.
So, on the, the, at the last meeting, I brought you, um, the, but I believe it was 21 bids that had, no, I'm sorry, 21 is now. I brought you the bids, uh, for the other categories for the Tross Street Pro- uh, Modernization Project. Tonight, we did rebid those that, uh, we were unable to get responsive bids, and so we're rebidding those projects, and we're bringing, um, you, uh, 21 bids that were received by the bid deadline for the six categories. There were two bid protests received, one non-responsive bid, and two bid withdrawals due to clerical errors. Administration did, uh, did meet with legal counsel to review those bids, and we now recommend that the board waive the minor irregularities referenced in, uh, the T3 Contract Corp's bid, deny the bid protest, which was submitted by Integrated Demolition and Remediation, Inc., and award a contract in the amount of $1,000,000.
Move to approve.
Motion by trustee Regal.
I'll second that.
Second by trustee Bradford. Any other questions or comments? Trustee DiWeiler.
Uh, council recommended that we, uh, do this?
Yes, yeah, we typically, when we have a bid protest, or if we have a, a situation where we believe there's a non-responsive bidder, we run that through council before we make that final, final call.
All right, anybody else? All right, let's call for the vote. Motion carries five zero. F6, Certified 2022, 2023 Second Interim Financial Report, Mrs. Ford.
Thank you, and there is a presentation here. So, um, as Mr. Drouski said, I can't believe it's already this time of the year. Graduation's coming up, but second interim is here as well. So, at this time, um, each year, we bring our second interim financial report. Uh, we brought the first interim in December, and that was for expenditures that were up through October 31st. And now tonight, with the second interim, these are expenditures through January 31st. So, in, uh, this report, we'll provide an update to the current year revenues and expenditures, as well as updates to assumptions for the current year and our two out-years, which makes up our three-year multi-year projection, and also balances of our other district funds. And then we will present a recommendation, um, to be, to submit a positive budget certification to the Riverside County Office of Education. So, turning first to, um, the revenues, uh, since the first interim, changes in LCFF revenue and an increase in some local donations have resulted in an increase of 1.4 million in unrestricted LCFF revenue, or unrestricted revenue. In the restricted revenues, the change is a decrease of 7.5 million, and that's primarily due to restricted grant carryovers, so money we don't, we have to record the funding at the same year that we have the expenditures, the revenue and expenditures. And we know we, we're not going to extend those, so we're moving the revenue and the expenditures into the following year, so that carryover. We, um, and then the governor's proposed, I talked about this last time, the governor has proposed a reduction in the arts, music, instructional materials, discretionary block grant funding, so that is also included as a reduction in our revenues um, in this particular, um, interim report. So the result of these changes is a net general fund revenue decrease of $6.1 million. You see that in the lower right corner. So then turning to our expenditures, we've also had some changes there with increases in unrestricted expenditures of 2.5 million, uh, which is attributed to increased services, and also some transfers out for capital outlay and debt payments. And then the restricted expenditures decrease is due to, um, anticipated carryover of the ESER funding into the 23, 24 year, and that's what I just talked about with the revenues, they have to match the revenues and the expenditures. As the district has received more restrictive funding, also some of our ESER expenditures that we hadn't initially earmarked for ESER have been shifted to use the most restrictive funding first, which is part, which is our board policy. The result is an estimated reduction in expenditures of $794,000. But then turning to our ending fund balance, um, given the, the updates, the district is projected to have an ending fund balance of 122.8 million. Components of the ending fund balance include, and those are listed at the bottom of that, that half, the components of the ending fund balance. And, um, it's the, uh, includes the restricted, which is the, is the 55.2 million, and that's, so that's the bulk of, of that funding, restricted funding. And then also assigned, we also have required reserves and committed funds, which include the health and welfare pools and funds for COVID contingencies. Um, turning to the multi-year projection, the first thing, you know, we always start with are the assumptions. So the assumptions used to develop the multi-year projection include the governor's January budget proposal for 2023, 24. And as you recall, the governor was estimating a COLA of eight point, or funding a COLA of 8.13%. And that would be in the 23, 24 year, and then a 3.5, uh, 4% COLA in the 24, 25 year. Current state revenues are trending lower than the governor's projections, so the Legislative Analyst Office, uh, said that, um, they actually are seeing ongoing funding lower, and could potentially only fund a COLA of about 6.4%. So we'll find out more about that at the May, the May revision. And, um, uh, average daily attendance percentages have not rebounded to pre-pandemic levels. Uh, we are projecting a current year ADA of 91.2%, 93.3% uh, for 2023, 24, and then 94.3% for 24, 25. So all of those are built into the multi-year projection. Uh, the unduplicated pupil percentages that we're assuming across all three years, it is 82.57%. And additionally, we, the STIRS and the PERS rates, which you see down below, the projections for those are also included in the multi-year. And you can see that STIRS is remaining the same, a percentage rate, but PERS is going up each year. So of course, all of this, you know, especially our LCFF funding, which is the majority of our, how we receive our funds, um, is all about the average daily attendance. So in reviewing our ADA, you can see that the district's declined by 188 students in the 22, 23 year, and is projecting a decline of another 189 students in 23, 24, and 150 students in 24, 25, and all of those declines are built into the multi-year projection. And again, those are estimated declines at this point. The only one that we know for sure is the 188 student decline that happened in this year in 22, 23. So the district will continue, of course, to closely monitor, um, average daily attendance, as well as the impact, uh, to the ongoing revenues. So, um, the, the multi-year projection, so based on the, um, the COLA and no change to ADA accounting, the district's multi-year, uh, projection summary shows a net increase in current year fund balance of 25.3. You can see that where it says net increase or decrease of fund balance. So 25.3 million this year, an increase of 3.9 million in 23, 24, and a decrease of 2.3 million in the 24, 25 budget. But of course, the district will meet its required 3% reserve in all three years, and be able to submit a positive, uh, certification for its budget. Then turning to the other funds, because we do maintain 11 other funds outside of the general fund. So turning to the other funds, um, the last column there shows the ending balance in all of those funds. And so all of the funds will have a, um, a balanced budget, and a balanced, uh, ending fund balance. So the things that we're monitoring, and that could impact the budget, so enrollment is obviously, uh, you know, a critical factor. Our attendance rates, you know, which, um, Mrs. Santa Lee is working hard with her team to bring those attendance rates up, and the, the sites are doing wonderful jobs with incentives, so we really do hope, plan that we're going to see those continue to, to increase, and we are already seeing that. And then inflation pressures, we know that that still exists, there's still supply chain issues. There are still, uh, staff shortages that are happening, um, and, you know, there's still stimulus money that's, that's there. And so that's caught, that's also, you know, uh, affecting and increasing prices. Um, health and welfare, those costs are increasing. A lot of people waited, um, during COVID. They didn't necessarily go to the doctor. Now they are going to the doctor, those things are happening. So we're starting to see our health and welfare costs rise more than they were during that, that COVID period. Uh, pension obligations, we mentioned about the PERS rates increasing. But just overall, we know that the pension funds, you know, that, as the market has volatility, the pension funds do too. So we're watching those things closely. And then we're also watching, and I know you, the board has, uh, asked this in, uh, in the past, we're also watching our expenditure deadlines for one-time funds, making sure that, you know, we are prepared, you know, to, um, be able to identify programs, what's working, and what we can continue, what we may not be able to continue, and those types of things when the one-time funding runs out. So, and being able to shift as much as we possibly can. So the next steps is to adopt, uh, our second interim here tonight, and then await the release of the governor's May revision, which is expected by May 15th. And then, um, in June, we'll bring the LCAP along with the budget for both review and then adoption. And then we'll wait for the state to adopt their budget, um, and then we'll start this all over again. So. When I think.
I will second.
Motion by trustee Regal, second by trustee Navarro. Questions, comments? Trustee Regal.
Thank you. Um, you did mention that about evaluating, you know, what programs or things like that. I know that during COVID, we contracted, had contracts based on COVID funding. I mean, is that, um, is that looking like we may be able to extend these, or is it possible that we're, we may be losing some people that we've contracted through this time?
So, I, I mean, we'll be looking at all of our programs, you know, right now, we're in a very good place, 20, you know, for 23, 24. You know, we still have ESER funding, you know, we have carryover funding from that that will be. And we have carryover funding from that that will be that will be using. So for next year, and so you know, things are kind of at as they are. So we're we're good there. When when we get past next year, we will have to start looking at what do we want to continue? What can we potentially shift to other sources because other other funding has come from the state? So we may be able to shift some things. But I I can't say for sure that we would cut one thing or cut another. That's something that we have to to actually take a look at and plan out.
Right. And I mean, and I see that we're fiscally solvent, so it just doesn't look like we're going to have any layoff concerns or anything. Everything just looks very smooth over the next three years.
Right now with the budget and the way it looks and having everyone we have in the budget. Yes, we we are positive for the next three years.
Okay, thank you for providing this great update.
Thank you, trustee Regal. Trustee Bradford?
First, thank you for being in charge of this. I have confidence when I see you at the helm of something, Mrs. Ford. My questions regard the projected ending fund balance in the multi-year projection summary. They each have something that say COVID contingencies. What are those, please?
That can be anything that comes up. So it could, it could be that, you know, when we're talking about COVID contingencies, we're talking about the impacts that COVID had on our students. Our impacts on our families. So it could be programs that we're actually running at this point that we want to maintain. And we need to maintain them longer than the one-time funds that are available. So those COVID contingencies could be just additional resources for our students. They could be facility needs that come up. So it's a multitude of things.
Okay, so it sounds like you're saying they could fall in a variety of of areas. Not just programs or it doesn't, or payroll or or
Yeah, it could be, it could be people, it could be it could be materials, it could be facilities, it could be resources. Yes, I mean, really, it's anything that we identify that because of COVID and now, you know, one-time funding has run out. But we need to maintain this because we need a little bit longer, you know, to to make sure that our students are successful.
How do you project for that? Is it just a wild crap shoot or?
Yeah, so so again, that's looking at those positions that we've funded with one-time money. And identifying what are those things that, oh, if we were to let this go now, that's going to be detrimental to our kids.
Okay.
And those are the things that the COVID contingency funding would be able to to continue to expand out, maybe not indefinitely because it's one-time funds. But it could expand in another year.
That's where your experience is valuable. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Regal. I mean, trustee Bradford, I'm sorry. Trustee Navarro.
So when you said that we looked, you know, pretty much, the summary, you said we look good for three years. Does that, does that go into account then when we have future projects of upgrading schools or whatnot? Does that kind of give us idea or pause that we might say if we were getting low, if we were, you know, getting to the, you know, critical point, does that put a hold on upgrades? Are those just necessary things that we have to spend money on anyways?
So so the funds that we're looking at with the multi-year projection are general funds, and that's typically not used for capital expenditures for you know, for maybe small things with facilities, but not to modernize a school or something like that. If we were going to do something like that, that's where we would need like, like a general obligation bond facility funds.
Okay, okay. Well, with four years, you got one more kid in your district. So four more years, so doing my part.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Only question I had, Mrs. Ford, was had to do with ADA percentage. You listed the next three years and increase in the percentage. And I was just curious somehow. And also you mentioned declining enrollment. So I mean, how does that all kind of calculate together and
So it does have an impact. So what happens is even, for example, if there's an eight point one three percent cola. If we have a decline in enrollment and our ADA has, our ADA is also either maintaining or it's not back to the pre-pandemic levels. Then we are not really seeing a year-over-year increase in funding of eight point one three percent. We would have something less than that. So that's how it has, it has the impact. So it's it's a matter of having both. We need the enrollment, but we also need the ADA to to increase.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation, Mrs. Ford, you and your team. Anybody else? We're all good. Dr. Dr. DiWeller.
Back to the ADA, I'm just wondering how how those estimates were arrived at.
So so looking at, well, for the ADA, for the ADA, we're looking at how much have we changed in the last, just it's in the last couple of years, because unfortunately, going back prior to that doesn't really give us good numbers. But looking at the percentages that we've changed, we were around the eighty nine, ninety percent. Now we're we're trending towards the ninety one percent. And we anticipate that next year, you know, we'll we'll be back into about the ninety three, ninety three percent. So it really is, it's kind of an estimate. But based on what we're seeing between P one, which we certify attendance in December, and then we certify attendance again in April. So what we're seeing the trend between those, we think that we can get to that ninety three point three percent next year.
All right. If you know more questions, we'll call for the vote. Motion carries five zero. Item F seven, adopt resolution number twenty twenty three slash twenty four in support of adult education in K through twelve school districts. Mr. Dubrovsky.
Thank you. As you know, J U S D has offered adult education classes to its community for many years. In recent years, with the passage of AB one oh four, the governor's adult education block grant dedicated funding has ensured continued K twelve education. We're proud of the work of our adult educations and the achievements of our adult learners. And when I say proud, I really should say proud in all caps, bold underscore, 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 because our program is spectacular. Under the leadership of Dr. Montañez, we have continued to grow and adapt and serve the needs of our community and our adult learners. But that continued funding hasn't always been the case. I remember a time during our last recession when that adult education block grant, we received word that you can sweep that, get out of the adult education business and use it to pay salaries in a time of tough things. And and fortunately, you know, our our district chose not to do that. And we have continued to offer and grow and had a great program. So you know, in light of our pride in the program and, you know, some some past history, resolution twenty three, two thousand twenty three, twenty four affirms our support for adult education going forward. And more specifically proclaims the expectation that adult education funding will continue to come to the district through existing fiscal structures. So we would recommend that you adopt resolution twenty three, twenty four in support of adult education.
Thank you, Mr. Dubrovsky.
I'll second it.
Motion by trustee Regal, second by trustee Bradford. Any questions or comments? Trustee Bradford.
I'd I'd really like to support it and publicly say as a current student in adult ed. Yeah, and and from hearing people who get their lobotomy technician's licenses from places like Everest College and pay twenty grand for it. Or go to some kind of nursing things and pay a lot of money for it. I I ask student, young people, do you know you can come here and get this? Or when I go donate blood and ask them, where'd you get your certification? Do you know you can get it here? You know, all these people who say student debt, it's like, why didn't you do your homework? Yay, J U S D. Plus, I was talking to Dr. Montañez last week. And the sheltered education for the this, the adults with disabilities. The therapeutic writing center where I volunteered had those students with Jeff Holt come there. They are marvelous and how he works with those students just spectacular.
Absolutely.
So yay team.
Thank you, trustee Bradford. Trustee Regal.
Thank you, President Garcia. I just also want to comment that this this program is so beneficial. We have three hundred and twenty eight students. Is it, is it, it got a little confusing reading these. It's because it talks about there's three hundred and twenty eight, or that's twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, but then there is.
Well, yeah, it's three hundred and twenty eight in the high school diploma and GED programs and three hundred and ninety two in the ESL programs. So it's 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 both of those.
Okay.
Actually saying like, a couple of whereas is up. It says Harupa Adult School served eight hundred and seventy three students during the twenty one, twenty two school year. So.
It did give a little bit. Let me read that again. But I do want to comment that attending the graduations and the people that come forward, whether they have students within the district or have been avoiding it or have reached to the point where they want to be able to follow a path in their career and just their self-esteem has gone up so much. And we know that our goal was to get everybody to graduate, but things happen in life. And so these, they take that opportunity, whether it's two years, five years, ten years. And I believe there was a grandma a couple of years. So, you know, they come back and they they spend their time. So this is a great investment for our community. And the parents for our students. So I thank the team for preparing this, and I'm glad that we're going to continue forward.
I will. And I would say, you know, that every every single person on that staff and faculty is, their their position is, how do we help get you there? Like, you can do this. And I think that that's why in large part that these people are able to come and and you know, re-realize their dream of having a high school diploma.
Thank you, trustee Regal. Trustee Navarro.
One hundred percent. Just want to reiterate what my fellow board member says. Love this program. What an amazing, what a way to also and enhance and show your your students and your and your kids that you're willing to further your education, that you're willing to put the extra time and into tell them it's never too late, right? If mom's going to school, mom's doing this, mom's going back, I want to work harder. I want to work harder. Maybe not to get in that same position, right? I'll work harder to get my diploma now and not do that. But I just think it's a great program that we offer that one. And and you know, we all are struggling with the recession and and prices going up. What a way to further further your education and and income in your family by taking the adult education and, you know, and furthering that. So kudos.
Thank you.
Anybody else? See, DiWeller.
Well, I just want to to echo what everybody else has said, and the statement that we value lifelong learning is is a worthwhile statement to be making. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I just wanted to make a quick comment. I I know there's a, it's not just diplomas, there's other programs too, right? But I think my first year on the board, I was covering the graduation there with Donna Johnston, who was on the board then. And we wear the black robes and so did the grad, the adult students that graduate and get their diploma. And and this one kid, he must have been like twenty, twenty one. He was so excited to get his diploma and he he came over to Donna and I, he thought we were graduating too. And he's, oh, you gotta go check in over there. I said, okay, okay. And but that's how excited he was. And that's the opportunities that that we provide there. And a fantastic job to you and the team. So.
Thank you. And you're right, there there are English as second language programs, there are high school diploma and GED programs, and then there are job training and certification programs. So all three of those, you know, serve our community in in fantastic economical ways.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, call for the vote. Motion carries five zero. All right, final item here, item G, final board member comments. Start with you, trustee Navarro.
Finally, my first committee of the year, the charitable purchase purpose foundation. So it's the first time on this one, got to learn a lot and ask some questions. And we elected a new board president for the committee and a new vice president. Thank you, Daniel Brooks, for that as well. I did not know that, you know, I don't know for you, for those who have Amazon accounts and have, you know, Amazon Prime, that you can choose a charitable donation. So it doesn't cost you anything. You just go on there and and the settings you can add that. I've had one for animal shelters throughout the years, but I do see now here that you can actually sign up for that. So there's a option to scan. Where would they find that scan promo code to to make it easier to do that? They discontinued that. Okay, well, false information, I guess I'm just recently. Okay. Anyway, we could pitch that back or is that something?
It's it's Amazon that actually made the change. So and and the only reason I know is because I have the charitable purpose foundation as my donation. And when I went on to make to select it, they said Amazon is no longer doing that that program.
Yeah, that's unfortunate. Well. But yeah, I just, it's a great opportunity for any J U staff, residents or employees to donate some funds to basically give opportunities to have some scholar, scholarships for those students. I look forward to reading all the essays and kind of being proud to be able to vote some some money to these students who work hard and looking forward to further their education. And that is it. I'll go home, get some sleep tonight.
Thank you, trustee Navarro. Trustee Bradford.
Well, this afternoon I went to the charitable purpose foundation meeting and now I'm the chair of it. That's it.
Thank you, trustee Bradford. Trustee DiWeller.
I have not attended any committee meetings yet this year.
All right, trustee Regal.
Thank you, President Garcia. I do not have any committee reports. However, I just want to make two comments and just to skip over and getting unintentional, but I want to recognize our communications department for your awards. It's very well deserved. You you do a fantastic job, your entire team. So I wish there was here, they were here so I can congratulate them. But my apologies for skipping that line item. And then, did I hear you say Dr. Corbin?
That is correct.
Wow, that's that's fantastic. That that one slipped through the cracks because nobody said anything, but I'm beyond proud. So if Dr. Corbin is watching, congratulations. So that's all I have this evening.
She is, so she heard you.
Thank you, trustee Regal. One thing I did forget to mention, and I'm sorry, Jack, I forgot to mention too, you and the team, Nidia and Markel, great job. Big, big part of the success of the district and and all these accolades and everything, you know. It's great, great job. So I did forget to mention to the board, my fellow board members here, that when I went to visit the print shop. One of the, they got this big printer that's set like fifty thousand page reel and and it, and so with the curriculum with the books, like teachers might want to teach out of order. So let's say, you know, chapter one, chapter four, whatever, they can get customized printouts from the print shop there. And and it collates and everything. And so that's really kind of a cool thing. So you don't have to like wastepaper and 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 that kind of stuff. So that's kind of another another thing I wanted to mention, I forgot to say. I also wanted to thank, thank staff, you know, here, our cabinet members. I mean, Mrs. Ford, I mean, without without you and your staff, we wouldn't be able to run the district. And so, you know, a lot of great things. We saw the reports today. And so we appreciate everything you and your team does. And then I go down to Mr. Dubrovsky there. Without him, we wouldn't have books and curriculum and kids wouldn't learn anything. And then Mrs. Santos Lee, I mean, equity and then community schools and and lots of great stuff there. I wrote something else down here. That was it for now. And then Mr. Brooks, you know, Leadership Academy, professional development, building our bench, you know, baseball season is back already. And with the change of the rules, they're going to have to start figuring out how to how to staff those teams. And so I'm, I know that's what you do here in Harupa Unified. So we appreciate that. And also we get the IT department back there. Thanks, guys, for everything. And I want to thank my fellow board members here on the board here for 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 serving with me and the team here with with unity of purpose, you know, we we don't always agree on stuff. We probably disagree more than maybe people think, but but we do agree on one thing, and we want our students to have the best opportunities. And so I want to thank each and every one of you for that. And for your friendship and cabinet and Dr. Hudson, any final comments?
No, I I appreciate, as always, the the work that is being done by by the board and and your intentionality with understanding the programs and and what we're
understanding the programs and what we're trying to accomplish. You know, we have a strong vision here and what the expectations are for our students and, and we're going to do everything we can to help support them, provide the, the best educational experience that they can possibly have. I really liked the conversation on adult ed. As you know, I used to, I had a small stint there as the adult ed principal and such a wonderful program. We talked a lot, you hear a lot in school districts, um, from, from the cradle to graduation, but we, we kind of carry the, the attitude of cradle to career or, or kind of like what Dr. Ditwiler said, um, about lifelong learning. And, and that is a, that is a strong vision that we have here is to support our, our students, um, all along their, their pathway and their journey. So thank you for all the work that you're doing. I want to thank our, our partners. Uh, I enjoy meeting with, you know, I got to meet with CSEA, uh, this last week as well as NEAJ and, and the exec board and instructional council met with Mr. Dubravsky. And it's, it's wonderful to have those conversations and, and to work together on, on creating solutions for the work that we're trying to accomplish in Harupa Unified. So thank you. And I, I look forward to seeing you all at the next meeting.
Thank you. And then that's all we have for tonight. So meeting is adjourned.